Can I have the motion to go back into executive, uh, go back into public session?
Some of.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Good evening. Welcome to Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for May twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for armed forces and those in our community who've lost loved ones, especially the father of Judy Stoll, the father of Marissa Warren, the father-in-law of Carol Fiori, brother of Erica Pays, and the brother-in-law of Ann Lynch. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation, on God, individual, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. We're going to start with a public comment on agenda-related items. Yvette, this one is still going to be by email. Did anybody send in any information for a public comment?
No, they did not.
I'll turn this over to you.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. What a special night. I see so many colleagues on the call this evening, and it's so wonderful to have all of our buildings represented on this call and represented to honor this evening. I will begin, first of all, good evening to the members of our board who are here. Good evening to all of my colleagues. I see you all in this meeting, and it's wonderful to have you here. Good evening to my colleagues, both from district office and from each of the school buildings. I'd like to welcome our tenure candidates and their families. I see so many families who are here this evening. Yes, Yvette, you can advance. Tenure in the Yorktown Central School District is such a great honor. It's an honor that has taken years, years to achieve, and tenure has got a destination to be reached. It's a checkpoint to celebrate and then continue on in your journey. And now, as tenured members of our faculty, our expectations are set even higher, and I have full confidence that you'll reach our expectations and exceed them. I have full confidence that you'll serve as mentors to the next group of new teachers in our school district. I expect that you'll continue to put children first, take strategic risks by incorporating new instructional practices that will better your students. I expect that you'll continue to serve as a source of inspiration and creativity. I anticipate that people will soon be looking to you, if they aren't already doing so, looking to you for guidance and innovation. You're holding the promise and hope of a bright future, teaching and leading in the Yorktown Central School District. It's my hope that you'll embrace the trust that I'm placing in you today to cultivate it further by continuing to fully invest in your own professional growth and the success of your students and in the mission of the Yorktown Central School District. On a personalized note, this group of tenure recipients this evening started their career when I began my career here in Yorktown. And I've seen this group through their entire probationary period by and large. So it has been three or four long years. And we're proud of you for getting to this point. On the next slide, you'll see how rigorous our process is. It's a four-year probationary period, three if you were tenured elsewhere in New York State. So that means that you had tenure in another school district. You decided to relinquish tenure to come to Yorktown and reestablish your career here. Twelve formal observations, including one by me and one by Ms. Soche. Many by your principals, and I want to take a moment to acknowledge the principals here. Our principals have done such an extraordinary job in mentoring, and I'll come back to acknowledging them. Our principals have done an extraordinary job of guiding our new teachers, our non-tenured teachers, through the observation process and helping our teachers to advance their practice and refine their craft. There have been dozens of informal check-ins, annual summative evaluations. We look at the contributions and involvement in the school community and different professional growth activities that the individual has undergone. This is a really comprehensive look at one's brief career in the Yorktown Central School District. It culminates in a tenure recommendation that I will be making to the board. It's not official just because I'm recommending you for tenure. It's not official until the board actually votes on that. So I have a wonderful, wonderful group of candidates for tenure this evening that I will be recommending to the Board of Education for their approval this evening. And Yvette, you can go to the next slide. Before I speak about each of the individual tenure recipients, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the families. This this has been such an extraordinary year, to put it in no other way and in no uncertain terms. Serving out your probationary period in a new district under normal circumstances is a challenge. And when you add a pandemic to that, the challenges are magnified exponentially. You're so devoted to your students. You're so devoted to our school district. I recognize the personal toll that this work can take on you and those you love. You didn't get to this point alone. Please always remember that. For many of our teachers, I think you all know the familiarity. When report card time comes, the dining room table is taken over and all of student work is spread out across the dining room table, and we're looking at each individual student's progress so that we can formulate the grades and the comments. I know that. And when you give a test on a Friday afternoon and you want to provide your students with timely feedback, I know exactly how you're spending your weekends, and our board is aware of how you're spending your weekends, and we recognize that service to the children of Yorktown and to the district. You're here mainly because of the person you are, but also because of the wonderful people in your life. Some of those people are sitting next to you, and some are not. Some are watching from far. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the families of our tenure candidates this evening. I personally thank you for supporting my colleagues and our colleagues during one of the most challenging times in education. I also, on the next slide, want to take a moment to acknowledge our faculty members, our colleagues. Whether you served as a formal mentor or whether you were just that informal mentor who your colleagues know they can go to for advice, someone to think with, have a critical friend, I thank you. Our principals, you have been remarkable mentors to our new teachers. And I think we all know that our new teachers do not get to this point without your support, your guidance, your feedback to some of the district office administration. Ms. Soche oversees curriculum and instruction here, and she has been such a mentor and colleague to many of our new teachers, and I thank her. There's a professional candor in this district that I truly admire. There is a collegiality like no other place. This happens for one reason, and because we know that our individual success results in the collective success of our district, and that in turn results in the success of our students. We're a team, and we are a team like no other. And I appreciate all of our colleagues who served in a mentoring capacity. Now, on the, we're going to go building by building on the tenure recommendations, and I tried to go by level. So we'll start with our schools that house our youngest learners, and within that, I I wanted to work through alphabetically the candidates at Brookside. We have five certified teaching assistants who are being acknowledged this evening for tenure. I'll start with Ms. Lena Di Matteo. And I have used excerpts from evaluations. I've used excerpts from tenure recommendations to formulate some of the remarks I'll be making this evening about each of our tenure candidates. So it's my pleasure to recommend Ms. Lena Di Matteo for tenure as a certified teaching assistant in the Yorktown Central School District. Ms. Di Matteo was assigned to a special education class of students with various needs, and the assignment demands a great deal of patience, skill, and collaboration. And Ms. Di Matteo has met or excelled or exceeded in all of these areas. She's fulfilled the unique individualized demands of each and every student that's passed through her program, and she understands each student's needs and how to meet those needs. Ms. Di Matteo has made herself such an indispensable part of the Brookside School faculty and for a special education program in general. I'm pleased to recommend her to our board for consideration for tenure this evening. The next candidate is Antonina Coletti. Ms. Coletti, I'm proud to recommend for tenure as a certified teaching assistant in the Yorktown Central School District. Again, Ms. Coletti was assigned to a special education class. She's performed magnificently, according to Ms. Samerling's remark. She's immersed herself in addressing some significant challenging behaviors, and she's offered support with tremendous nurturing and care. This year, Ms. Coletti supported a new teacher replacing a teacher who took a leave, and they quickly built a very cohesive and collaborative relationship that facilitated a seamless transition. I am so pleased to be recommending Ms. Coletti for tenure this evening. The next candidate I'll be recommending is Ms. Samantha Healy. Ms. Healy was appointed as a CTA to Brookside in September of two thousand and seventeen. And in Mrs. Samerling's words, the first traits that become apparent upon meeting Ms. Healy are her intellect and her passion and compassion for working with children. For the last four years, Ms. Healy has been assigned to support the speech improvement program, and she has undergone some training in this area to support our students. This year, Ms. Healy was asked to supplement her responsibilities in the speech improvement program in order to support remote kindergarten classes for part of the day. And it was her professional dedication initiative and technological skills that were so valuable to us in this moment. I'm pleased to recommend Ms. Healy for tenure in the Yorktown Central School District. The next candidate that I'll be recommending to the board this evening is Ms. Colleen Morganti, and Ms. Morganti is a certified teaching assistant at Brookside School. Ms. Morganti was appointed in September of two thousand and seventeen, and she came to Brookside with extensive experience working in a preschool program. And her compassion and love for children were just evident from the start. As soon as you saw Ms. Morganti working with students, you can tell that there was a love of early childhood. She was assigned to a grade-one integrated co-teaching class where she's worked for the last four years. Mrs. Samerling cited she's genuinely impressed by her organization, creativity initiative, and eagerness to mentor CTAs. And there are certain and several building responsibilities that we're grateful for Ms. Morganti stepping up to. She was a part of the arrival and dismissal process and in a COVID era, in a COVID era, to have someone volunteer to take on those responsibilities, we're truly grateful. It is with great pleasure that I recommend Ms. Morganti for tenure as a certified teaching assistant from the district. And finally, at Brookside, I'm pleased to recommend Ms. Lana Sanabra for tenure as a certified teaching assistant. Prior to joining Brookside, Ms. Sanabra worked at Yorktown High School, where Mr. De Gennaro shared that she was a very well-respected member of the high school team. In her role currently as a CTA in a twelve-one-two classroom, Ms. Sanabra was assigned to support academic and behavioral needs of students. This year, Ms. Sanabra has supported the needs of third-grade students. And students began fully remote and then transitioned back to school, and that flexibility and adaptability were paramount in the success of the transition for the student back to school. Ms. Sanabra has been part of so many different aspects of the Brookside School community, most notably many parents who arrive at Brookside's campus at dismissal will see Ms. Sanabra outside supporting the safe dismissal of students, and we certainly appreciate all that she does. She readily accepts changes to her responsibilities. She approaches all new tasks with a smile and a positive attitude, in the words of Ms. Samerling. I'm pleased to report to recommend Ms. Sanabra for tenure as a certified teaching assistant. And that concludes the recipients of Brookside. My congratulations to you all. We have a wonderful group of faculty and staff that I'll be recommending at Mohansec School. So the question always comes up, well, why do you begin with Mohansec, and why do you go to Brookside? They're both K-three schools. I go alphabetically. So I begin with Brookside, and then I move to Mohansec. The first candidate that I'll be recommending for tenure is Ms. Laura Boards. And I've had the opportunity to observe Ms. Boards, and Ms. Boards may be one of the most talented art teachers I've seen at the elementary level. She is remarkably gifted in her work with children. Students feel comfortable in the class. They know exactly what's expected of them. They produce beautiful artwork, and it is just a joy to watch her teach. Her students are confident in their artistic ability, and Ms. Boards does such an, such an extraordinary job of validating every child as an artist. And at the K-three level, to have that kind of start to one's formal education in art is really remarkable. I do want to speak to the art show that Ms. Boards has brought to Mohansec in a little depth. For anyone who has visited the Mohansec Art Show under Ms. Boards' leadership, it's nothing short of amazing. The artwork that the students produce could be mistaken for children of many years older. I am so pleased that Ms. Boards has joined our staff, and I'm even more pleased to be recommending her for tenure this evening. The next candidate is Lauren Ferella, and I see Ms. Ferella on this call, and I see so many of her colleagues from Mohansec on this call. Lauren's actually a graduate of the Yorktown Central School District, so Lauren has returned home to our district, to her district, to support students now. She's quickly distinguished herself as a collaborative, perceptive, and trustworthy person. And we know that she will be successful in whatever goals professionally that she sets for herself. Because of Ms. Ferella's hard work, she accepted additional responsibilities, and she's had different experiences. She was assigned to the kindergarten ICT class as a special education program age. She continued to learn, develop her confidence and effectiveness. In addition to the CTA role in the classroom, she's had so many different responsibilities. One only need to walk into Mohansec to see the responsibilities that Ms. Ferella takes on. She supervises morning arrival, lunch, recess, afternoon dismissal, and she handles all of these responsibilities with so much energy and attention to detail. I could not be happier to recommend Ms. Ferella for tenure as a certified teaching assistant in the Yorktown Central School District. The next candidate that I'm pleased to recommend for tenure is Ms. Erica Giorgio. Erica is such a valuable, energetic, and dynamic professional, just terrific at what she does. For the past three and a half years, she's worked closely in our kindergarten program. This year, she has helped us with our remote program and remote offering at the kindergarten level, and Mrs. Berry shares that Erica has an insightful and intuitive sense to her. She's gentle, calm, and patient in her love of children. And that's just a testament to Erica and all of her work in our school district. Again, Erica has arrival and dismissal duties. She has daily lunch and recess duty, and no matter where in the building she is, she exudes this warmth and kindness and patience with all with whom she interacts with. I'm honored to recommend Ms. Erica Giorgio for tenure as a certified teaching assistant in the Yorktown Central School District. The next candidate this evening is Kathy Guglielmo. I'm pleased to represent Ms. Guglielmo for your consideration for tenure as a certified teaching assistant to the Yorktown Central School District. Currently, Ms. Guglielmo is a kindergarten CTA assigned to work in Spoches Class. She has really grown in her time here into just a wonderful, wonderful professional. You can see that she demonstrates confidence and competence and great decision-making and is really child-centered. And those are some of the words that Mrs. Berry, her school principal, used to describe her in her tenure recommendation. There's this profound desire to learn and grow, and she's certainly going to exceed whatever goal she sets for herself professionally, and we're excited to see her continue to grow professionally in our school district. Based on her history of exceeding our expectations and meeting a standard of excellence, I am just so pleased to recommend Kathy Guglielmo for your consideration for tenure as a certified teaching assistant in the Yorktown Central School District. Our next tenure candidate this evening is special education teacher at Mohansec, Ms. Elizabeth Martin. Ms. Martin is extraordinary in every way. That is just a fact. She has this innate ability to work with children in our earliest grades. She's hardworking, skilled, talented, and positive at all times, and that's something that I really admire because over this past year, that's not always an easy thing to do. Ms. Martin is a teacher who cares deeply about her students. She's dedicated to their academic success as well as their social and emotional well-being. And this year, Ms. Martin has taken on a role within our kindergarten classrooms as an ICT setting and has done an extraordinary job working with our students in the ICT setting. I am delighted. I've been in to observe Ms. Martin. I stopped in to observe Ms. Martin, and I was so impressed by what I saw and the energy that I saw and the child-centeredness that I saw, and it was absolutely remarkable. I am so pleased to recommend Ms. Martin for tenure this evening. Our next candidate for tenure is, in the area of elementary education, is Ms. Kristen Miola. Kristen is, lives in town, has children who go to our schools here. I have come to know her teaching and have enjoyed visiting her classroom. She's insightful, smart. This very shares that she's well-read and demonstrates a desire to learn and grow by reflecting on each piece of her lesson as well as the decision-making when planning and delivering lessons. That is a very high compliment to be given to a teacher. Ms. Miola speaks very thoroughly to her students' needs, and she speaks very thoroughly to student progress. She's an excellent communicator, communicating home with families of the children in her class. There's this profound love for learning, for research, for expanding her repertoire, her knowledge base, and it's evident in all that she does. She's an active member of several district committees and district teams, including the district report card committee, red ribbon committee, LA committee, and she is just such a great contributor and a thoughtful contributor to so much more than the classroom, so much beyond the classroom. We're delighted to have Ms. Miola here, and it's without reservation that I recommend her for tenure this evening. The next candidate is also in the area of elementary education, and it's Ms. Kristen Simone. I'm delighted to recommend Ms. Simone to the board this evening for their consideration for tenure. Ms. Simone, as described by Mrs. Berry, is an exceptionally talented and skillful early childhood teacher who is student-centered and student-focused. She's able to accomplish much and take on many responsibilities, and her strengths are enormous. In fact, Ms. Simone came to us as the director of a very well-established preschool, and the transition to the Yorktown Central School District has been so seamless and so wonderful. She's a wonderful collaborator. She contributes greatly to the grade-level team. Her knowledge base and skill level are extraordinary. She's an active member, again, of several committees in the district and within the building, within the red ribbon committee for several, for several years. She also is part of our East Team and Best Committees at the, at Mohansec, and her contributions have been enormously valuable. I'll tell you, when I observed Ms. Simone's class, what impressed me most, and I shared this with her, was the academic nature of the class and the academic vocabulary that was used and the rigor that was used. I'm delighted to recommend Ms. Simone to you for tenure this evening. And finally, at Mohansec, I'm pleased to recommend Ms. Kimberly Vogel for tenure as a certified teaching assistant in the Yorktown Central School District. Ms. Vogel is such a dynamic and active and energetic and, and just committed, dedicated staff member. She's very child-centered, always looks out for the safety and well-being of our children, takes a personal interest in the children and what they enjoy, and gets to know our children at a deeper level. She's giving, she has a generous spirit, in the words of Ms. Berry. She's one of the first people to help our students, our families, and our staff when there's a need. For the past several years, Ms. Vogel has been assigned to implement our second-grade speech improvement program, working under the direction and guidance of our speech and language therapist. She has done such a remarkable job in all responsibilities that she has been given. Any changes of responsibilities have been taken in stride, and we are delighted to have Ms. Vogel here in Mohansec. Without reservation, I recommend Ms. Vogel for tenure this evening. That concludes our Mohansec. And now, for those, we generally do these meetings in person. We're still looking for a videographer. If anyone is interested, we received some interest. But now for the board, I'm thinking about this. You'd be standing this entire time as I go through all the tenure candidates, so that's something that I certainly will be mindful of as I prepare my remarks for subsequent years. I'm going to begin with Mr. Avdak. Now, Mr. Avdak is currently serving as the assistant principal at Crumpon School. Mr. Avdak began his career here in the Yorktown Central School District in two thousand and seventeen at Yorktown High School. And what impresses me most about Mr. Avdak is the thoughtful thinker that he is. Absolutely brilliant, very thoughtful, logical in his thinking, has demonstrated the ability to work effectively at the high school level and now at the elementary school level, and that kind of versatility is quite rare. Dr. Roberts has really embraced having Mr. Avdak as a partner in the work, and the two have made just a fabulous team together. It is without reservation that I recommend Mr. Avdak for tenure as an assistant principal in the Yorktown Central School District. The next candidate this evening is Ms. Francesca Baco Manginelli. I still call her Ms. Baco. That's why the slide, I prepared the slideshow, and I, I still have have kept Ms. Baco as Ms. Baco. It's such a great pleasure to recommend Ms. Baco for tenure in the Yorktown Central School District. She's been a special education teacher at Crumpon School for the last four years and has done such a remarkable job for our students and for our school district. She's demonstrated professionalism, in the words of Dr. Roberts, and a devotion to learning, most importantly, a commitment to our students. Ms. Baco continues to be an active member of the Building, Garden, Literacy, and Social Committees, and she has the opportunity to work closely with colleagues as a result of her involvement in the broader school community. There's such a great energy and care for her students. I observed Ms. Baco this year and was just so impressed by what I saw and the differentiation and the individualized support and the nurturing, and obviously, she's a content area expert and knows the content. But as we move past that and see the genuine investment in her students, it's absolutely remarkable to see. For this reason and for so many more, and I could speak for quite some time, I wholeheartedly and without reservation recommend Ms. Baco for tenure in the Yorktown Central School District this evening. The next candidate at Crumpon School is Ms. Jennifer Coppola. Ms. Coppola has served in this capacity for a number of years. The last several years, working as a certified teaching assistant in a fourth-grade class as well as in an eight-one-two class. She has demonstrated such a commitment to our students, a just unparalleled professionalism and a devotion to the building as a whole and the operations of the building. She has been an integral part of so many aspects of the building operations. She genuinely cares about all students, and it's very evident that students are at the forefront of her work, and you'll often hear some wonderful anecdotal stories about the impact that Ms. Coppola has had on so many students at Crumpon, and with great enthusiasm and on so many students at Crumpon and with great enthusiasm and it's an honor to recommend Miss Coppola for tenure in the Yorktown Central School District. At this time, I'm pleased to recommend Miss Marie Fritz for tenure as a certified teaching assistant in the Yorktown Central School District. Miss Fritz is a vital member of the Crumpon Learning Community. She's spent the last several years as certified teaching assistant in our eight one two class. She's demonstrated again, just a profound love for children in her role. And you can often see her working shoulder to shoulder with our students, supporting them just in the most nurturing way that one can imagine. It's kind of what you imagine for your own children in their experience in school and what you would hope for would be their experience. Mrs. Fritz is devoted to all students, although she works with a select number of students. You can see her supporting so many more students. She's always positive. She's always willing to help. It's that can do attitude where no task is too great. And I know I speak for Dr. Roberts when I say that she really keeps children at the forefront of her work. For this reason and so many more, I'm just delighted to recommend Miss Fritz for tenure this evening as a certified teaching assistant. And finally, at Crumpon, I'm delighted to recommend Miss Jody Copsstein for tenure as an English as a New Language teacher. Miss Copsstein has served in this capacity for the last four years. And again, she has really worked with students in their language acquisition in their acclamation to our school district. Sometimes the students with whom Miss Copsstein is working are new to the country and the support that Miss Copsstein has provided them is just immeasurable and the benefit and the good that she's done is immeasurable. She works closely with her colleagues as well. She collaborates to ensure that as she's working in a classroom, she's providing a safe learning environment. The students feel supported. They're receiving the services that they need. And she is an educator, in the words of Dr. Robert, who is genuinely, Dr. Roberts, who is genuinely committed to the success of all students. I've observed Mrs. Copsstein and I was delighted by actually a math lesson that I observed her delivering. So the English as a new language teaching role has certainly no boundaries in terms of content area. So I observed a math lesson that was uniquely customized to meet our students where they were. And I was just so impressed by the thought and the effort that went into the planning of the lesson. And Miss Copsstein did not know I was coming in that day to observe her class. So this was not a scheduled visitation. This was just another day into Miss Copsstein's work. I'm honored to recommend Miss Copsstein for tenure this evening. Moving to our middle school. We have two candidates there at our middle school. I'll begin with Miss Lynch, special education teacher. Miss Lynch is completing her fourth year as a probationary special education teacher, Mildred D. String Middle School. Miss Lynch is flexible, willing to learn any material to assist anyone who needs assistance, regardless of whether they're on her caseload or not. It's just the type of person Miss Lynch is. I'll tell you a story about my observation of Miss Lynch earlier this school year where we were in the hybrid model. There were students in front of Miss Lynch. There were students on the screen. And the amount of energy, and this was about eight o'clock in the morning, and the amount of energy that was exerted by Miss Lynch was nothing short of remarkable. She was on the screen. She was individually working with individual students and then back to the screen and back to the students and what a remarkable lesson. And as I spoke to her principal, my understanding is that happens every day. And that happens every period of every day with Miss Lynch. And she has not only supported our students in a remarkable way, she has also worked collaboratively with her co-teachers. She has worked with her colleagues in the special education department. They co-plan, they work through curriculum matters together, all so that they can prepare lessons to meet the needs of our children. I'm honored to recommend Miss Lynch for tenure this evening. Finally, at the middle school, I'm pleased to recommend Miss Regina Stanton for tenure as a library media specialist. Miss Stanton used to work with Miss O'Shea in PPS and this was quite the challenge to have Miss Stanton move on from that position because she was such an integral part of that PPS office. And Miss O'Shea thinks the world of Miss Stanton. I think the world of Miss Stanton. Specifically, what I can talk about from the library perspective, because that's where we're recommending for tenure. It's a strong work ethic and commitment to the success of students. There are certain things that I can point to just this year alone that have been inspiring, a virtual remote library to offer curbside pickup and exchange of library books to keep our students reading during a time where they may not have been in school full time. It's working on the character education committee through the library. It's being a part of so many district wide task forces and the Fab Lab and East Team presentations and supporting the work that's happening in the other content areas through the library. I observed Miss Stanton earlier this year giving a lesson and it was remarkable how engaging she was. The content obviously is terrific. And there's no question about her content area expertise, but those pedagogical skills that you see in veteran teachers were readily evident in this lesson. Absolutely remarkable in so many regards. She, again, students were in person, some students were remote. And she went from student to student in person with a Chromebook in hand, checking in with the students. The amount of preparation and planning and follow up with the students and the quality of the lesson was just remarkable. And again, in speaking to the other administrators who have observed, you'll hear very similar things. I'm just honored to recommend Miss Stanton for tenure this evening as a library media specialist. And that brings us to Yorktown High School. We have three tenure candidates at Yorktown High School. I'll begin with Miss Allison Greenberg. I I actually just want to talk to her observation for a moment, but I wanted to share that Miss Greenberg arrived at YHS from the EF International School. And she has made such a seamless transition to our school district. She's an experienced counselor, so although she's relatively new to the Yorktown Central School District, she does come to us with a lot of experience in counseling and a full range of skills and talent. Mr. DeGennaro states, Miss Greenberg is knowledgeable, compassionate and a highly effective communicator. She's a proven leader who works well with the entire department, faculty, colleagues, students, parents and the entire high school community. In the lesson that I observed or in the meeting that I observed, Miss Greenberg spoke to a student and just had such an amazing understanding of the student. She anticipated the questions that were coming in the college search process. She anticipated so many of the considerations that would be raised during that meeting and was prepared to address them in that meeting. Miss Greenberg is such an active member of our high school team. She's a problem solver. She always seems to be ahead of issues and is proactive in her approach to counseling. And we are delighted to have her in the Yorktown Central School District and it's without reservation that I recommend Allison Greenberg for tenure this evening. I'm pleased to recommend Christopher Miller for tenure this evening. Chris is a talent like few have seen. He's absolutely brilliant and brilliant in so many different facets of the organization. Intuitive, logical, analytical and critical in his thinking. A great problem solver, someone who can look at the different aspects of a situation and piece them together into the most safe that can tell the complete story. We started an engineering program here in the district and certainly under Miss O'Shea's leadership and Mr. DeGennaro's leadership. But Mr. Miller was an integral part in getting so many of our new programs off of the ground. And he has been such an integral part of our team. COVID, pre-COVID and I sure hope post-COVID. I am delighted to recommend Mr. Miller for tenure this evening as an assistant principal at Yorktown High School. And finally, at the high school, English teacher is Jennifer Pamela. Miss Pamela is just an extraordinary English teacher. As I observed her class, I saw something interesting that you don't see every day. They were reading, students were reading a chapter in a book and there were a list of words on the front board with definitions. I thought nothing of it until the first student got across the word that he wasn't familiar with and asked, what does that word mean? And she anticipated exactly which words students were going to question in advance of them in advance of the questions being raised. Currently, Miss Miller is collaborating with another teacher in tenth grade ICT. The class is wonderful. And Mr. DeGennaro's word, it can serve as a model for outstanding teaching. She successfully collaborates with each and every group in the, in our learning community. She absolutely is a lifelong learner and she welcomes feedback to improve her skill set and overall teaching performance. I am honored and delighted to recommend Miss Pamela for tenure as an English teacher in the Yorktown Central School District. And finally, we have one more for tenure. I saved him for last. And Rob Barrett's referred to as our athletic director, but he is so much more than the athletic director here. He's a director of physical education and health as well, according to his title. But I will tell you that Rob has been just a blessing. He and I actually started here on the same day, so we're, we're beginning together. And we've been on this journey together and, and I couldn't, I, I've shared with the board, I wasn't the person who hired Rob, but I'm sure glad you did. Because it was a great decision that this Board of Education made. I involve Rob in so many different matters beyond athletics. He's, he's an amazing athletic director. He's at every event and I recognize this and Rob, I hope you're with your family tonight watching this because I know that this job has taken you away from them so often. So I hope you get to celebrate this really special night with your family by your side because you have earned so much more. You've earned my respect. You've earned my appreciation, my gratitude. There's a reason why we include Rob in so many matters beyond athletics because he's just such a great thinker and such a logical thinker. And it's wonderful when the director of athletics is an academics first person. Someone who understands the value of school. Someone who in his first year, rather than spending Thanksgiving with his family, he was up in Syracuse to make sure that our football team had everything that they need to be successful on the field and off the field. That's the type of athletic director and person that Rob is. So I am thrilled and just so honored to recommend Rob Barrett for tenure this evening. We're fortunate to have someone of his caliber with us. That concludes the candidates for tenure this evening. And what I'll share just very briefly, before I close and I turn it over to the board, tenure is the beginning of another chapter of your career. You've become familiar with the expectations of the district. The district has become familiar with your teaching and your character. But I wanted to share a couple of important last words of this ceremony on this evening. The next stage of your journey. Because remember, this is just one step in the journey. This is not a destination. The next stage of your journey will only be successful if you continue to always be grounded in what's best for children. When the best interests of children guide your decision making, you won't make a bad choice or take a wrong turn. Our goal should be simple, to make a positive impact on every child with whom we interact. And we can, we can do that. We can do that. I know we're masked in the hallways, but we can smile at a child as we walk by. You can see a smile under a mask. A smile can change the trajectory of a child's day. Never underestimate the power of a smile. Show kindness, show empathy, show compassion. Your content area expertise will shine. I promise you that your content area expertise will shine. But it won't happen until you've shown kindness, empathy and compassion first. Your students should know how deeply you care for their wellbeing. When you were with students, nothing should detract from your attention to them. They deserve your very best, ten days out of ten. And I have full confidence, I have full confidence that you'll always give our children your very best. The impact of a teacher is far greater than one can ever see. And I thank you all for choosing to make your impact right here in Yorktown. Congratulations, everyone. And Miss Carbone, I will turn the presentation back over to you because what I did was ceremonial in nature and what the board does actually counts. So I turned it back over to you and I appreciate the time to present the candidates to the board this evening.
Can I have a point of order from the board? I'd like to move tenure up. So can we have a motion to grant tenure to the below named candidates? All those in favor? Congratulations, everyone.
So now it's official. Congratulations, colleagues. Thank you so much to our colleagues. Thank you to our principals for joining this evening. At this point, I know I mentioned earlier that I can see you all on this call. We have other business that we're going to be conducting. You're welcome to stay on this call, but also if lesson planning or other things that you'd like to continue with, you're welcome to do that as well. Otherwise, it should be a great rest of the meeting if you choose to say. Have a good evening, everyone. It was great to see so many people on this, on this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
On, if you want to go into the superintendent's updates?
That would be terrific. Thank you so much for the opportunity to transition right into that. I first want to acknowledge the budget vote from last week, a week ago tomorrow, actually. Thank you so much to our school community. Your support means the world and your overwhelming support is what came through during this past budget. Our budget passed with a favorability of over seventy-five percent and that's just a testament to the wonderfully supportive school community that we have here in the district. I also want to congratulate Miss Carbone and Mr. Bisaccia on their reelection to the board. It's wonderful for you to join us and then to continue the great work that the district has already begun. We're on Zoom. We're still working through a videographer. The board is really eager to get back to in-person meetings. So if you know someone with aptitude, we have some interest and we're vetting the candidates now, but if you know someone with aptitude and interest, we're paying forty dollars an hour. It is a pretty significant commitment. This board has made a significant commitment. It's just about every Monday, every other Monday. And it's about four hours of time. So we really would appreciate anyone who has interest to just send human resources, Dr. McGinnis, Dr. Sheila McGinnis, an email with a letter of interest for the position. And the board, I'm sure, is looking forward to that. Just a reminder on school calendar, I've been getting some inquiries on school calendar. I put out a couple of letters with some calendar information. I also did a live video update last Monday night. Friday, May twenty eighth, that's this Friday, schools are closed. Monday, May thirty first, schools are closed. June calendar, I shared a June calendar. The high school calendar has been posted to the website for quite some time, so you're welcome to access the calendar. And on their website for the elementary schools, it's that last Wednesday and Thursday that are early dismissals. Friday, the children are working from home. It'll be a very brief day. We do need to give our teachers some time to break down the classrooms and prepare for the classrooms for that deep cleaning that they undergo over the summer where we completely remove all the furniture and really prepare the buildings for September. Speaking of September, that's the second most asked question is how will schools look in September? The reality is, I'd be disingenuous if I told you exactly how things would look. I do anticipate schools fully reopen. I don't anticipate a A, um. Remote model being offered. I, I do anticipate a full reopening with all of our students back to school. Uh, will masks be worn? I don't know. I, I really don't know. Right now, we're adhering to the mandates from the New York State Department of Health. So as the guidance from the Department of Health changes and, and the changes have not come yet, but as those changes come, we will follow suit. So I understand some of the questions about masks or concerns about masks or concerns about some of the procedures. I would encourage you to write a letter to the Department of Health and, and have that conversation with them. The district, like most districts, will. Carry out the requirements that are set forth by the experts. So I don't claim to be an expert in mask wearing and the science behind the efficacy of mask wearing. But I do follow the requirements of our Department of Health and I do certainly follow the recommendations of our medical director. So will masks be worn in September? I don't know. For the foreseeable future, they will be, but I don't know how things will look. Come the fall. The. Just my final piece for this evening that I wanted to share with our school community. Well, first of all, I'm getting a text message here. Uh, that our softball team just defeated a nationally ranked Maupac team two to one. Which is absolutely remarkable. So if anyone on the call, um, is, is. A softball fan or, or just a fan of a great story, our, our students just defeated a nationally ranked team. So that's absolutely wonderful. Congratulations to them. This, the final thing, we had the budget vote at French Hill. And we moved it out of Mohantic for the first time. I would like to at some point, it's a year away, so we have some time, but at some point I would like to. Discuss, uh, that being considered as a location, what wonderful feedback we received from our community. About that budget vote. The facility is air conditioned, well ventilated. Um, accessible, so absolute, and it's away from where we have children in a building. So there's a safety element as well. That we're promoting. My thanks to Yvette Siegel. I just want to publicly acknowledge the district clerk who did a remarkable job. That is a long and grueling day. And you're on for the entire fourteen hours of that day. Um, and, and Yvette did a spectacular job in making sure that the election was carried out. Correctly and, and properly and then that all aspects of, of law were followed. So. Yvette, just a public word of thanks for all that you did to make, and it's not just the budget vote. It's all of the steps that lead up to the budget vote. I. And publicly, we see the budget vote, but there are weeks and weeks and months of work that go into preparing. So my commendation to Yvette Siegel. District Clerk on a really successful budget cycle and, and Tom, your team did a great job. Designing the budget and planning and just every year par for the course and, uh, I appreciate you and your team. Jackie, that's, that's the extent of my report. I will turn it back over to you and I appreciate the time.
Thank you. I just want to mention with, with Yvette, a lot of the, um, the workers that help us during the budget vote also do. The town's budget vote, they do all the elections, and they even said at the end of the night that Yvette does a far superior job to managing the whole process. Then almost anybody else that they've worked with. So she, our hats off to her. She did a phenomenal job. Thank you. Um, we go to board action items. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April twentieth board meeting? All those in favor? A motion to approve the treasurer's report for April two thousand and twenty-one? A motion to approve the claims law to report for April two thousand and twenty-one? Uh, motion to approve the extra classroom report for April twenty-one? Uh, policies, a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policies. We have fifty-one fifty, age of attendance, school admissions and attendance areas. Fifty-one fifty-two admission of non-resident school students and eighty-one forty unsafe school transfer choice. All those in favor? Personnel, upon recommendation of superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. We have certified personnel appointments, part-time. Uh, appointments, we have additions to the substitute list, a resignation for purpose of retirement, other resignations, and under classified personnel. We have additions to the substitute list. All those in favor? Business office, we have a motion to approve the agreement with Tobin Company for internal auditing services for the. Twenty-one, twenty-two school year in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. An amendment, uh, motion to approve the amendment one not to exceed dollar amount of eighty-one twenty-five approved on the. May ten, two thousand and twenty-one agenda for Gieser Levy vendor agreement for the period of July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-two. The correct call cost per year is not to exceed sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars. There is no additional impact to the budget. All those in favor? A motion to approve the following health and welfare services provided to resident people attending non-public schools and other districts for the twenty twenty-one school year. This is to Yonkers. A motion to approve the budget transfers as listed below. Tax warrant, a resolved for recommendation of the superintendent, the board approves the tax warrant notification for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. To the towns of Yorktown, Portland, and Newcastle in the amount of eighty million eight hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars calculated. As follows, non-parbory tax revenue is twenty-one million. Thirty-nine, seven, thirty-seven. Total tax warrant to be collected is eighty million eight sixty-six, two sixty-three. The total appropriation is hundred and one, nine oh six. All those in favor? Our lower Rick resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education authorizes the execution of the twenty twenty. Twenty-one, twenty-two initial contract for the lower Rick Bosie services. All those in favor? A motion to approve the following Yorktown Congress of Teachers professional improvement proposal for teachers. That are listed below. All those in favor? A motion arrange the following placements as of May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one? All those in favor? Gift grants and donations, a motion to approve the following gift grants and donations with gratitude. Yorktown Central School District, two thousand dollars for the fidelity charitable. From fidelity charitable, a recommendation of Gwendolyn Robin Farrell Scholarship Fund. We're up to public comment. This is a, a live public comment. If anybody wishing to speak in the audience, please raise your hand. Okay, we're gonna go to board comment.
Uh, I'm good. I just want to congratulate, uh, you Jackie and Peter, um, on the reelection and, um. Also to Tom and to Ron for the, you know, hard work on the budget. Um, you know, congratulations.
Um, yeah, tonight, uh, I look back on such a wonderful night for our district, um, as we honor. Our tenured employees. I think about what an honor it is that they chose us to work here. Some of the adjectives that I heard from Dr. Hatter were child centric, supportive, committed. And there are no better adjectives to describe people who are working with our children every day. So I congratulate our tenure candidates tonight. Um, I thank them, um, as a parent with children in the schools. It's just incredibly important and, um, so heartwarming to hear about such a group that has a real truly vested interest in all of our students. Uh, I also want to thank Yvette for, um, her days spent and all the time leading up to and after at the polls. Uh, for the, uh, election and the budget vote. So, um, thank you to Yvette. And congratulations to our, uh, two incumbents who were reelected to their seats.
Did you say Pete, Jackie? Um, just, uh, congratulations to all the, the tenure recipients. So. I, if that's a wonderful honor and, um, I'm looking forward again to, uh, when it's in person. Uh, Mike, this, this is one night I've always truly enjoyed. And, uh, Dr. Hatter, I don't mind standing up for it. So looking forward to it.
How much more I can say, um, congratulations to all of our, uh. Personnel receiving tenure tonight. Uh, it's wonderful, uh, to have you as part of the district and looking forward to many more years to come. And, uh, congratulations to, uh, Peter and Jackie for, uh. Signing up for another three years and, uh, winning a reelection. Thank you, guys.
Me?
Yeah, you.
I didn't hear you. I mean, congratulations on all the tenure people. Let's work hard for that. That's awesome. And Pete and Jackie, what can I say? Congratulations. I, I just curious, how long has it been, Pete and Jackie? Do you know? Since you started the board? Now, how many years? Trying to figure out how long I've been. I don't even know. Something like that. I can't figure out the year we started, but really, congratulations. And it's fantastic that, you know, you're still here and still beautiful. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I mean, it's all been said already. Um, you know, like Pete said, I don't mind standing up for, for hours tonight. It's our, it's our honor to do so. The, the, the staff and the employees of this district make it what it is. We get all these honors and awards and. Listed on all of these, you know, US best schools and blue ribbons because of them. You know, it has nothing to do with us as the board. It, it's them. They make up our district and they. Um, have our kids excel and our kids go to amazing colleges and get great jobs and do all of these wonderful things because of them. So thank you to them and to, to Jackie and Pete. Um, like Dr. Hatter said, it's a big time commitment. Um, you know, people see us on either on Zoom or hear about the meetings and think this is all it is and it, and it's really not. It really is a big time commitment and. Um, Jackie and Pete, thank you for, for doing it again for us. Um, we know especially you Jackie, how much time you put into it. Um, so, so thank you. You are also, uh, what makes our district so great. So thank you.
And one of the things I can always say is this is a board and it's seven people. It's not one and. If we weren't as good of a team, we couldn't support the district the way we do. So I thank everybody on the board. And I want to thank the teachers for choosing us. I mean, we've granted them tenure tonight, but they chose to come here and they chose to stay. So we're really honored. That you chose to make Yorktown your home. So thank you very much. And thank you for your well wishes. I'm glad the budget passed. I am glad that the, um, capital improvement. Money were allowed to be taken out so we can start to plan for next summer's work with the air conditioning because with all the kids back in school, we're really gonna want to focus on making sure. All our large spaces are air conditioned. So thank you to the community for that. Ron, Lisa, Tom, anything?
I generally don't add another comment, but I had a note on my, um, on my list of things to discuss and I wrote some enchanted evening with no context. And I wasn't sure if I was just referring to this as some enchanted evening. And that's not the case. Our high school drama club put on a wonderful performance this past weekend of some enchanted, um, evening and. I'm just so proud of the work they did and just in a time that has been so difficult for the theater arts. The students really came together and really just made me proud, like our students always do. So I just wanted to, I, I was looking at this thing, some enchanted evening with, and then here it is. So congratulations to our students. Congratulations to Mrs. Stock. On, uh, just another brilliant performance.
If I could also, uh, Jackie as well, I know it's been said, but I do want to share my congratulations to all of the educators who received tenure tonight. They are so professional. They are so dedicated and I'm just so happy and proud to be in an organization that continues to. Uh, grow because the people who work with us are so dedicated to the craft that they have. So congratulations to everyone who received tenure tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm gonna ask for a motion to go back into executive session with no intent to return to public session. Those in favor?
Go back in under the same, uh.
Yeah, how do we go back in?